Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 workshop session to order. Rule call, Madam Secretary?
All members are present.
Thank you. We now like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me in standing. And the flag, I believe, is located right onto the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I would like to first start off by saying happy School Resource Officer Day, best day of the year. Thank you. I think it's very appropriate that it falls on February 15th after Valentine's Day because Carmel Clay School loves our officers. So we are so thankful for the work that they do each and every day and it does not go unnoticed. We will now move into consent. May I have our consent items, those kind of give a summary? Includes personnel report, claims, and payroll. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you, Leila, second. Thank you, Louise, is there any discussion? All those who vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes, five to oh. We will now move on to our main event, our workshop topic regarding Carmel Clay School employees and the culture of well-being. Mr. Roger McMichael.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to share with you our initiative of creating a culture of well-being. And you might have thought that this was going to be about our wellness center and it is. But that's, that's a part of what we do, but, but it's, it's more encompassing in that. Carmel started in about 2010 discussing the possibilities of, it says wellness center, but we were really thinking clinic. And our medical premiums had gone up as everybody else has had in double digits for several years. And most recently in 2009 had gone up 10%. We were receiving very little money from the state, which meant that our employees were, have, and Carmel Clay Schools, both of us were finding increasingly difficult to pay the, pay the expense for our, our medical claims. And so we were really motivated by, by trying to save money. Other schools were beginning to put in clinics as well and, and so, but we, we were not supportive of a clinic with, without a high deductible medical plan. And back then, our medical plans had to be negotiated. And so, as you might imagine, that, that took some, some doing to, to make those types of changes. And so, once we had a, a high deductible plan to offer, we wanted to couple that with a wellness center because the concept here is that to the employee, they can utilize the wellness center at no cost. It's not that there's not a cost, but there's not a cost to the employee. So with a high deductible plan, incentivized employees to use it because otherwise it would be out of pocket. Then in 2012, we started doing things like blood draws and we started a pedometer program. 2013, we were, we opened our wellness center. We were very fortunate that we had acquired the building across from the high school. I wanted to say the old library, but many of you won't, won't realize that's what it was. But, but prior to 2000, the, the building across that we have our wellness center in was the Carmel Library. And so in 2013, we opened, that was our original opening date. It really was consisted of the clinic portion, if you will, of our, our wellness operation. And you'll hear later this evening that we've continually expanded since then. You can see here in 15, we started offering fitness classes. In 16, we added mental health, which was, I think, one of the best decisions that we made. And then in 17, we added onsite physical therapy. And then finally in 2020, we began offering financial well-being. And so, and the board, as you know, have just this evening took a quick tour of the facility. But I wanted to share quickly for benefit of the public, the layout of our wellness center. And so this area is, is the clinic portion. And it's noted that we have four exam rooms, two behavioral health offices, a lab, a dietitian's office, a healthcare coach office, and a care navigator office. Then we have the fitness center portion where we teach any number of fitness classes. And you can see here, we have two fitness studios, a cycle studio, and then one room for strength equipment and another for cardio equipment. And then up in the corner is our physical therapy. We have two physical therapists that work out of, out of that area. And then this evening, I want to begin by, I want to mention Dr. Michael Busk. And Dr. Busk is not here this evening, but he, until last year, he oversaw the Ascension operations in, in, for employers. And so I've known Dr. Busk for 10 years and so he was instrumental in what we're doing. And so I just wanted to recognize him. I also want then our presenters, first we'll have Monica Cronin. Monica is our wellness coordinator and she puts together all the fitness classes. And we have Peter Dunn. Pete is the CEO of Your Money Line, which is a service that we utilize for financial well-being. And you may recognize Pete as Pete the Planner. And then we have Dr. Elizabeth Prosser. She's our Director of the Wellness Center and our Lead Doctor. And then finally we have Mary Delaney. Mary is President of Vital Insight. They provide all the data analytics for us, which is an absolute critical component of what we're doing because we, we want a third party to confirm what we're doing and so that it's not just us feeling like we're, you know, we're making a difference. So they really are, oftentimes you hear people talking about a wellness operation. We refer to it as a well-being. We feel that there's four components of well-being, the, the physical part of it, which most people are familiar with, but also emotional, social, and then finally financial well-being. And you'll note here that 66% of the people are doing well in one area, but only about seven people, 7% of the people are doing and thriving in all these areas. So we'll begin with Monica, if you would, and she will share information about what we're doing in the area, excuse me, of social well-being.
So we have many different offerings for our employees. And to note on the fitness center side of the center, it is open to all employees. So you don't have to be on insurance. So that, that's kind of a unique thing. So it's, it's nice that we can get everybody included into that. We do have a pedometer program. We are with a company called Virgin Pulse and employees can earn up to $500 per year based on their activity level and the steps and different challenges that we have. And then we, we work with Virgin Pulse to create challenge programs that, that allow people to interact with each other and other employees. And, you know, they earn points being part of the fitness center and part of the fitness center programming. So that's just a little bit about our pedometer program. Oh, it's right here. All right, then, as you noticed today when you took a tour of the CCS Fitness Center, we have two, what I call beautiful fitness rooms, so I'm going to use a lot of adjectives. I think they're amazing. I've been in the fitness industry for a lot of years. These are really state-of-the-art rooms. The rooms, the flooring is perfect for fitness. It's a suspension flooring, so it's, it's low impact on the joints. We also have a cycle studio with video screens, as you saw today. We have a boutique fitness studio, which includes strength and cardio. And that is a, a membership thing. We currently, we have a strength room and a cardio room. And we currently have about 156 members who participate in that, you know, in that studio. And we, we keep growing. We keep getting a lot of people. When they see it, they go, oh, this is really nice. And they, you know, it's private, it's, you access it once you're, you've been given activation. You access it with your badge. You can get in and out anytime, so it's really nice. We do offer approximately 38 classes a week, depending on the session, but it's usually anywhere between 38 and 42 classes. We're at 32 or 38 right now. Of every kind of class you can think of, we have yoga, every kind of yoga. We have guided meditation. We have strength classes, cardio classes, cycling classes, Pilates. So a really big variety. We have classes for retirees as well, which is nice to bring them back and have them participate with us as well. So it's a huge variety. Right now, we have over 260 participants and it's a registration of about 390 classes combined with all those, those people. So they take, they, once they're there, they love it and they usually take more than one. Personal training, we currently have six personal trainers on staff. We had to add another one because we were just getting too full. So we have over 50 participants right now at doing at-cost personal training. It's the cheapest you're going to find anywhere. And these trainers, I really, really believe in. They're wonderful people. Now, we're going to watch a little video that we made about two years ago. And Roger, can you start that? It's a video on the fitness center. It's just kind of a fun little, oop, nope. Oop. Back. And just to showcase the different things that we do, we also go out into the cla, to different schools as well and have classes as well. Oh, here we go. Hey, come in, you're going to be late for class. Hi, my name is Monica Cronin and I am the Wellness Coordinator for Carmel Clay Schools Fitness Center. We have a full schedule of classes here at the Fitness Center and they are for everybody in the school district. When I say everybody, I mean all abilities, all levels, all staff members and including your spouses and your families as well. You will find when you attend classes here that you'll become part of a community. You'll develop friendships with people from all different buildings. And from that, an amazing support network for your own fitness journey. We offer classes here year-round, so even in the summer. We offer them on weekends and after school and into the early evening. We have everything from strength classes that include TRX and strength training. We have Pilates, various types of yoga, including vinyasa, yoga flow, and yoga for stress relief. We also offer classes for those who like to dance, jazzercise and zumba. And we also have a full spinning studio. We have 17 of the best fitness instructors in the area. These instructors are warm, welcoming, and motivating. And they are guaranteed to give you a good workout. You will not find, for the caliber of classes that we have, a better deal anywhere in the city. We make it easy for you to take care of you because when you take care of yourself, you are better able to take care of others, whether that translates into the classroom or into your family life or whatever you have going. If you're ever interested in trying any one of our classes out, just shoot me an email and we will get you set up. So that was a little, little promotional video that we put together a couple of years ago. And I, I love it. I think it's, it does really showcase, especially if you see the smiles on those instructors. That's how they all are. They're amazing people and they just really motivate. And if you talk to the people that take the classes, they're like, oh my gosh, I love this instructor, I love that instructor. They're all good. I stand behind every one of them. They're, they're really fabulous. We also have a program called Team CCS. Team CCS is our run-walk group. And we participate, now that COVID is, is calming down, we participate in running and walking events throughout the year. We encourage, we give them points on their Virgin Pulse program. We encourage participation. If they do so many, they get a Team CCS T-shirt. We try to get together beforehand and sometimes afterwards to create that community feel. We really want people to feel like they're welcomed and, and they're part of something, not just a club that they walk in and out of, but that they're really part of something special. And if they can pick their favorite charity, so it's been really fun. We, we get a discount for the employees and are, usually have a corporate team going as well. So that's a little bit about our Team CCS run-walk group. Now, the, the next thing I wanted to do is just give some testimonials. This is a, a testimonial of somebody who started taking classes with us a couple of years ago. Her name is Renee Moyer. She currently is a teacher at Clay Center Elementary. I think she's been a teacher with us for about 18 years. She's been with us for a long time. You can see her before and after picture there. In the last three years, she's lost a total of 56 pounds. That's really amazing. But better yet, she is so active now. She takes classes, she personal trains there. She's started doing running races, she's started doing biking races, she is in a biking group. She's probably one of, one of the more active people that we have there at the, the center. And you can imagine the difference she's made in her health, not just the weight, but in her, her overall health. You know, there are a lot of good things that, that went on with that and she just feels better, more confident. And you might have seen her, she was cleaning up somebody's, somebody's, uh, uh, else's mat today who had to leave a little bit early. But Renee is, is one of our star performers there and I'm just so proud of her and I had to showcase her. We also have somebody else we're going to showcase tonight and her name is Karen Caddow. Karen has been with, with the high school. How long have you been, 20, 25? I thought it was right around there. 25 years. She is a teacher, a Latin teacher over at Carmel High School. So Karen, there's a before picture of Karen with some of her family members. Karen was born with a condition that caused the right side of her body to be smaller than her left. And balance was an issue really all of her life and we still work quite a bit on that balance. Over the years, she had some weight gain. And we're going to show just a little video. When we first started with Karen, the, the other little video, yeah. And then we're going to bring her up. But here, here Karen is on the Bosu Balance Ball. And when we first started, it was hard for her to stand on it. And here she is doing a squat to overhead press on that. That's a really big deal. So when we did this, I think we, did we start crying? I think we started crying. We got really excited. I was so excited and just so many little victories that she's had. But I'm going to bring Karen up now to tell her story from her viewpoint. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much for allowing me to present. Karen, come on up.
Thank you, Monica, for your kind words. I'm here this evening to talk about how I've benefited from the Carmel Clay Wellness Center. I can remember when the Wellness Center first opened, I was super excited for the health opportunities that would be provided. But I really didn't understand what the scope of the Wellness Center would evolve into. Originally, it was convenient to have easy access to a doctor and being able to pick up prescriptions right across the street from the school. Then they started offering fitness classes and I tried Pilates and yoga. And I really enjoyed the classes, but I was also super self-conscious about my balance. And so I kind of stopped going to classes after a while. I got remarried and then I put on quite a bit of weight. And I started working with the Wellness Coach Liz Sackers and the Dietitian Monica Porter to try and lose the weight I had gained. It was really slow-going. One day I realized that personal training was being offered by the Wellness Center. And the rate that's charged by the Wellness Center is amazing, oh my goodness. Because if you go outside of the Wellness Center, it's at least two or three times what we charge. So it's a great deal and I love to train. It's my favorite thing to do. Monica Cronin's been working with me over the last two years. My goal with Monica has been less about losing weight and more about gaining balance and strength in the right side of my body, which is partially paralyzed. As Monica and I have worked to strengthen my body, Monica began to push me into, outside of my comfort zone into taking other classes. And so I would be moving almost every day of the week. So now I train two times a week and I take three classes, meditation, Yin-Yoga, and total body conditioning. And then on Fridays, I walk with the Wellness Coach Liz Sackers. Through the Wellness Center, I've been blessed to, to create a team of people who continually push me toward my fitness goals. And the Wellness Center has enabled me to truly, excuse me, truly take care of my mind, my body, and my soul, which in turn has really helped me to be a better daughter, a sister, an aunt, a mom, a wife, and a teacher, the best that I can be. So I'm grateful for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica and Karen. Now I'd like to introduce Pete Dunn, who will share information about our financial well-being program.
Thank you, Roger, and thank you all for having me. My name's Peter Dunn. I'm the CEO of a company called Your Money Line. We serve millions of Americans through their employers to help them with their financial lives. We happen to serve tens of thousands of teachers nationwide. I also happen to be a proud Carmel parent of two Carmel students and live here in the district. We began this initiative with Carmel Schools in the early spring of 2020. I apologize for making you think about the early spring of 2020. But at that time, many Americans found themselves taking on water financially. They were worrying about just about everything, about themselves, their health, the economy, their jobs. And so Carmel teachers and faculty and staff were not immune to those challenges and worries either. It's not just that they were worried about themselves, but they were worried about their loved ones, the people that maybe they share finances with where they may have had insecure financial realities. You see, coming out of the pandemic, there are three groups of Americans now. There are people, 25% of us, who are struggling. 25% of Americans are struggling financially. 65% of Americans aren't struggling, but they're not stable. And 10% of Americans are financially stable. Now, this is an important reality because when you think about your finances and you think about struggling, most of your decisions are driven by stress. You don't want to make financial decisions under stress. I received an email, our, our team did, two weeks ago tomorrow. I'll just call it February 2nd to be brief, February 2nd of 2022. I'm going to redact some of the information because this is from one of your teachers and I want to protect their, their identity. Hi, Your Money Line, I'm a whatever grade teacher at so-and-so school and just found out we're expecting baby number three. We're worried about money and we're wondering if there's someone we can talk to to help with us, help our finances. That's what we do. We are financial problem solvers. If you think about the complexity of a person's financial life on a scale of one to 10, one being you're opening your first checking account and 10, you're trying to decide what hedge fund to invest in. Most Americans struggle with one through seven. That's to say, most Americans don't actually need financial planners, they need financial problem solvers. Financial planners are eight through 10. At Your Money Line, we deal with one through seven. We help people make housing decisions. Something we do special for teachers and other people in public service is we help them navigate the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. Since our partnership with Carmel Schools, we've helped secure over $544,000 of student loan forgiveness for your teachers. That's to say that we've increased the net worth of the teachers of this district by over a half million dollars. Not only do you think about someone's financial realities of building wealth, building assets so they can eventually retire, we believe the best way to do that is to get all the roadblocks out of their way right now. Getting people's student loans forgiveness is, loans forgiven is some pretty low-hanging fruit that takes a lot of work. I know you didn't come here tonight to learn about the ins and outs of the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. I won't put you through that unless you need a good sleep, but it is pretty intricate. But I'll note this, that starting in May, student loan payments are going to become due again. There's been a 26-month hiatus as to when federal student loans were at a 0% interest rate. So that's to say, many of your teachers are part of the 86% of people who are not prepared to make their loan payments again starting in May. So we suspect there will be an uptick in cases from our people related to student loans. And we're excited to help them with that process. We are certified financial planners, we are accredited financial counselors. We sell absolutely nothing. No one is asked to buy anything. We're open from 9:00 AM Eastern to 9:00 PM Eastern. There are people on our line right now, all over the country, who work for us that people who use us are talking to right now. And the key to what we do is empathy. I, I think what's interesting about the financial world is it's really not known for empathy. And, and so we take great pride in not shaming someone's beginnings. If someone's struggling, if someone's just simply stressed and they don't know what to do, we want to listen and then point them in the right direction. Having worked with tens of thousands of teachers as an organization, I can say that teachers tend to have a degree of martyrdom to them. They, they tend to use their own money to buy school supplies. They, they have all these selfless acts and sometimes it's hard to twist their arm to let you help them with their finances. I'll say that we've had a good engagement with Carmel Schools. We work with some other local school districts as well and we're proud of the work we do with Carmel Schools. We're going to continue to engage with your faculty and staff and your teachers. And, and another note, it's just as important that we help the food service workers here of Carmel Clay Schools and the bus drivers, that their financial situations are just as delicate as, as anyone else. The final note I'll, I'll have for you this evening is sort of report on what's going on is, our goal is to increase financial stability. There are 10 factors of financial stability. We measure it. I can tell you the average financial stability of anyone who works for Carmel Schools that has taken our assessment. Our goal is to measure it and then improve it. You hear the old adage in the financial industry of, well, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't get the, the horse to drink. We believe that we're really good at getting a horse to drink because we can solve the underlying issues. So thank you for your time, thank you for your commitment. Thanks for letting us serve your teachers who serve our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. So now we want to share with you some information about our Wellness Center. I wanted to point out these statistics, according to the Institute, Institute of Lifestyle Medicine, 90% of type 2 diabetes, 80% of coronary artery disease, 70% of strokes, and 70% of colon cancer is preventable. I just found those statistics amazing. We've gone over some of this information, but you can see here, the Wellness Center operates Monday through Friday. Our, we, we definitely work as a team in a holistic approach focusing on lifestyle. Because again, people think about, well, their heredity is what drives, you know, their, their health and their life expectancy. But the fact is, is that their lifestyle is the primary factor in, in all of those things. The services offered through the Wellness Center, with the exception of the fitness classes, which are $4 a session, by the way. The, all the medical services and so forth are at no, no cost to the employees and their dependents that are, and they're covered under our medical plan. medical plan. A key difference here is that the doctors and the health professionals have time to visit with the patients and gain insight to their medical conditions. And so our average appointments are 45 minutes as compared to maybe 15 minutes or so in a traditional doctor's office. Here, the medical professionals are not, you know, they don't have to see a certain number of patients in order to make all the metrics work and be able to pay the utilities and the rent and so forth, so they can totally focus on what they believe as a medical professional is in the interest of their patients. And then importantly, our employees have complete access during the workday, so, you know, they, teachers certainly don't leave their classrooms and so forth, but they, you know, they work around their schedule. Our classified staff work with their supervisors to, you know, to arrange convenient times for them to go because the key here is, is we want them to go and access is a critical part of that. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Elizabeth Phillips, or Prosser, I'm sorry. And Dr. Prosser will share with you some information about the Wellness Center itself.
Can everybody hear me? Can you hear me okay? I tend to be a low talker. So the World Health Organization would describe health as a state of complete physical, mental and social wellbeing and not merely the absence of disease or infirmity. That's a big statement and it's very nuanced as you start to think about what that really means. And broadly speaking, every one of us in this room or everyone that's going to be watching this plays a part in the health of their family, of the people they're in contact with and of their community. More specifically, each of us have strengths that we use to contribute in a positive way to our community and to our family and to the people that we come in contact with. It may be something as simple as an act of kindness when you're going to the grocery store. And so the person at the grocery store that's receiving the act of kindness, maybe it's a smile or maybe it's eye contact, they certainly are receiving some health benefit. But interestingly, studies show that the person who's committing the act of kindness is actually receiving health benefits in their bodies. That's measurable. So there's chemicals like oxytocin and dopamine and serotonin that increase when an act of kindness is committed. And if you have a habitual committer of act of kindness, they actually have increased health benefits even beyond those who rarely commit these acts of kindness. So I think that's fascinating that science is kind of figuring out that the way that we treat each other is important. And so kind of drilling down more specifically, so how does the Wellness Center support this journey of health for the people that we serve? So if I can get this go to the next slide, there it goes. So I'd like to draw your attention to the middle of the slide and there's a person there. It doesn't say patient, it says person by design. This model that we, this type of medical model that we have at the Wellness Center is meant to support a person. Sometimes it's a patient, you know, it might be a person who has a medical problem or a mental health issue. But there's other times where people come in and they're relatively healthy and they're just trying to figure out, how do I stay healthy? And so we help them to find what their health goals are. They may have fears regarding their health, they may have a family history of cancer and they're trying to figure out, well, how do I, how do I avoid that? I want them to avoid that, but the patient, the person is very concerned about that. There's other things that they may be concerned about as far as mental health issues that they might not have brought up if they didn't have the extra time that we tend to spend with them. So such a comprehensive approach can only be accomplished through a team. And so you'll see all those team members surrounding that person and also by this culture of wellness that is being fostered here at the Carmel Clay School System. So we have four family physicians who are involved with the care at the Wellness Center. Two of the physicians have added certification for lifestyle medicine. One is a sports medicine physician who comes one day a week to help to support our industrial athletes and our regular athletes because we do see children there as well. And we have RNs and LPNs that are committed staff to this type of model. They know the patients that they're greeting at the door and our staff is very consistent. We have a registered dietitian. She has a master's degree in dietetics and she has an added certification in lifestyle medicine. She helps to bring clarity to the confusion that seems to be surrounding nutrition these days. She also helps to promote, there's add age food is medicine. And so there's, an example of that would be the DASH diet. So that's the dietary approach to stop hypertension. That's a well-studied way of eating to decrease and treat hypertension. It's supported by many different health organizations such as the American Heart Association. And she's able to help people have a better understanding of what it would look like to follow that type of diet. We have the wellness coordinator and you've already met her, Monica Cronin. The importance of exercise can't be overstated. One study would suggest, or actually there's several studies that would suggest that 15 minutes a day of a moderate intense exercise helps to decrease all-cause mortality. That's your chances of dying of anything, dementia, heart disease, stroke, cancer, just by a moderate intense exercise on a regular basis. So the exercise is very important in trying to help people reverse disease and stay healthy. We have a nurse navigator that's there and she's extremely important. It's important that she's onsite, that people know who she is. And so when they need to, when they have questions about their complex medical condition, she's able to help them to navigate the healthcare system. The people that belong to this healthcare plan can go anywhere throughout the city for their specialists or for, they also have their own primary care physicians oftentimes and they just happen to see us as well. And to try to gather all those records and make sure that we have all that information, she works hard to make sure that we have a medical chart that's integrated. She also helps to remind patients that it's time to come in for their abnormal lab follow-ups or their colonoscopies or their mammograms. So we're doing a lot of outreach to make sure that people are getting their preventative care put into place. And then we have a health coach, Liz Sackers, that was mentioned a little bit earlier. She's also an exercise physiologist. She has multiple certifications as a health coach and she helps some of our more complex patients to move and to get started with exercise. She is passionate about weight loss and she's been very successful in helping people to lose weight and help to keep it off along with our dietitian and with Monica Cronin. So being overweight leads to a host of medical conditions such as high blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes. So this aspect of movement is really important and to have somebody regularly meet with you can be very important as well. So we have onsite physical therapy. These are orthopedic fellowship-trained physical therapists, they have a hands-on approach. They treat the usual conditions such as knee, shoulder and back pain, but they're integral in helping conditions such as recurrent headaches. They help to improve functional movement after illness. They prepare patients for surgical procedures such as strengthening the muscles prior to a joint replacement. After patients are released from a surgeon, they oftentimes are kind of rehab to the place where they can make it to the bathroom and maybe take a shower, but they're not to the place where they can begin to do the things that they really care about, like going for walks with their family or maybe they're planning on going on a trip and they want to make sure that they are able to keep up with their family members when they're exploring the city. So the physical therapist will take them farther into their rehab so that they're strong enough to enter into like going to the gym that Monica has put into place and just start doing the classes. Last but not least, we have our mental health providers and I can't say enough good things about them. Thankfully, we had, prior to the pandemic, two very experienced licensed clinical social workers. And the mental health need has been increasing over the country in general, but the need was highlighted quite a bit during the pandemic and certainly in this educational system. It's been very stressful over these past couple of years. So the mental health provider helps to provide services to children, adults and couples. They facilitate referrals to other mental health providers if it's needed. If we have someone who's really in crisis, they help to facilitate getting them into the proper place, like over to the stress center. And then after their release from the stress center, they help to facilitate integration into their family and into their job and back into life again. And they've been, they're just very committed to their patients, very caring. So you kind of met everybody on the team and you're probably wondering, well, how would that all look or what does that look like? The team works very collaboratively. We have, oftentimes, there's a lot of communication amongst each other. There might be that the licensed therapist would come to me and say, hey, I'm seeing so-and-so and I'm thinking that they're not doing very well and I want to get them on your schedule and so I'll work to do that. And then vice versa, I might see somebody that really is struggling and so we'll get them over to the, either the physical therapist or the counselor or the dietitian, whatever their needs are. So in general, as was pointed out, Roger pointed out, that diabetes and pre-diabetes can be very preventable. And if it's not preventable, it certainly can be, the treatment can be assisted with using all the dynamics that are in this circle here. So an example may be that somebody came in and they were getting their physical exam and they had an abnormal blood sugar. So they would be in a pre-diabetes range. And so when that happens, then we get ahold of the patient, that might be myself or it might be the nurse navigator. And we start to work on just shared decision-making about, well, what would you like to do about your, your blood sugar being high because we don't want you to become a diabetic? And so they may decide, well, I really want to start working on my diet. Or they might say, I don't want to work on my diet, but I do really, I used to be an athlete when I was younger and I'd like to start moving more. And so we start where the person wants to start. And so thankfully, we have all these people that can help in that place where the patient wants to begin their journey. And then if they have anxiety or depression that seems to be causing them to perhaps binge eat, then we might have them see the counselor. And so eventually, oftentimes, when you've got a complex medical condition, the, a patient may see many of us within our team. And that's actually kind of what happened. We're going to meet one of our patients here shortly. Okay, so, I can't read that, where am I at? So I'd like you to meet David Brown. He's going to come up here in just a minute. In 2018, can I step away? So sorry. So in May of 2018, Mr. David Brown had a physical and had some fasting blood work that indicated an abnormal A1C, which is a pre-diabetes. The nurse navigator encouraged him to return for a follow-up visit in August. At the follow-up visit, he mentioned symptoms that were bothering him, including gastroesophageal reflux. It was determined that his symptoms were a little bit different than the typical gastroesophageal reflux. So we ordered an EGD, which is a test where they look down into your, into your stomach. And at that time, they discovered that he had a stage III esophageal cancer. The treatment was involved chemo, radiation and surgery. The treatment was a success, but his journey was complicated. So Mr. Brown was seen by multiple members of the CCS Wellness Team, the dietitian, the physical therapist, nurse navigator, counselor and physician. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. David Brown.
Hello, everyone. First and foremost, thank you, Dr. Prosser. I've said that many a time. I would not be here today if it wasn't for her. I mean, there's no ands, ifs or buts. When I told her what was happening and it didn't really seem that horrible, although by that time, by August, it was pretty darned horrible. I was having trouble swallowing them, what have you. She sent me to have the gastroenterologist look at me. And I was coming out of being put under and he walked in and first thing he said was, I'm sorry, you have esophageal cancer. And we then had to go to Methodist to have them confirm it. The insurance company really loved it if it wasn't, you know? But anyway, it's not a fun one to get, I will say that much. And so I did go through many weeks of chemo and radiation at the time. They actually started many of these things before we had the approval from the insurance company, simply because they knew I was stage III, later stage III. It was going, it was already in my lymph nodes. And if it breaches from your esophagus, they could only offer end-of-life support. I mean, that's really all they can with this cancer. So they immediately started, then I went in in December for my surgery. The surgery is not fun, okay? But I will tell you, if you are having issues swallowing and you're not sure why, get scoped because it may not be fun, but I'll tell you, I've watched my two grandchildren grow for three more years. I've watched my children, my two children grow and expand. It gave me a life. I mean, it gave me absolute life. There was, there's no, nothing else. Anyway, this will add in there. I went in typically this surgery about eight days, you get to stay in the hospital. My first day was 23 days, during which time, most of the time I was confined to my bed with so many alarms on it that if I moved my arm, there were five nurses in the room. They had to make sure I didn't move at all. I could raise the bed up a little bit, but I couldn't go down less than 30 degrees because they had taken everything out in there and they had to keep it where it would, it wouldn't come up, you know, other problems would exist. That was between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Just after New Year, I had a very large infection and wound up back in the hospital for nine more days. I will say, over the past three years, I think I spent about three months in the hospital for various things, but hey, there are complications, but I'm alive. So once I was getting out and it was getting better, both Kathy Lowe and Julia Thera are two of the nurses there and I think Kathy retired, but very helpful, extremely, continued to be. And I just, fantastic. But I also saw Dr. Prosser quite a bit. You know, she would, she took me under wing with this and she is right. I wasn't, I never felt, I don't feel like a patient now. I feel like I'm someone they care about and they want to take care of. One of the first things she got me with people was Monica Porter, the nutritionist. I unfortunately, when they take your esophagus and a third of your stomach and then turn your stomach into a hybrid between your stomach into a hybrid between esophagus and a stomach, you lose weight. It's like bariatric surgery on steroids. It's big time. I lost over 100 pounds. And yes, I was overweight, but yeah. She, she worked me through, she also worked me through before I blew the surgeries to make sure that I kept my proteins up so that they, they could give me the chemo. But then the second thing was, when I got out, I couldn't eat much and yet, at the same time, I couldn't keep losing weight. So she helped me through understanding what to eat and that, you know, even though I don't like them, dried fruit and stuff still gives you the vitamins and all, but there's no water content, so it keeps down. After just a little bit of that, I started seeing Molly Elgin, who was the physical therapist over there, and she asked me what my goal was, you know, what, if you spend that much time in a bed, not only had I lost all the weight, I was having problems with every aspect of walking, anything, strength, you name it. So she, she put together a program. I said, in three months, I want to go visit my daughter in New York City. And she said, okay. In three months, that lady had me walking better than, no offense, my wife and my daughter. And my daughter lived there and walked everywhere. So, I mean, she did a phenomenal job with me. Sometime in that process, I think just about everybody I met with knew I had some other issues. I mean, that much time in the hospital and that much care and being confined, I mean, at times, they literally had me strapped down even. That will give you a little bit of anxiety and other issues. Plus, when they take out that much of your gut, you don't produce as much serotonin. And so you have, you have to have supplements for that. It helps you, of course, it's an antidepressant, but it also helps post-traumatic stress, which I can assure you, that was an issue. Amy, it took Amy Admexki, I hope I said that right, it took her a while to kind of break me out. I'm the type of person who, I'm doing pretty good here, I don't like, I don't like to talk about myself a lot. But she did, she finally broke through and she realized I needed even more help. But I see Amy still every month. And then the additional help was because I needed additional drugs that they could not prescribe there. So that worked. Now, you know, it's been a long journey. It has been a tough journey. I highly recommend to anyone, again, if you have issues in swallowing, it could be simple. But Lord knows that this, if it gets too far, you just don't want to do it. Although it is a great way to lose weight, you know? Anyway, thank you very much for sponsoring this, for paying for it, for, I mean, this is a benefit that I cannot believe people aren't utilizing with, well, most do, I know, but what I'm saying is, those who don't, within the school system, I have no idea why they wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So now, the question is, we thought it was really important that we had concrete data that would either confirm that we're doing some things right or that we weren't. And so at this time, I'd ask Mary Delaney, President of Vital Insight, to come up and share some of our, some of her data analytics that she provides us for our wellness operation.
Yeah, so thank you, Roger. Thank you for having me here tonight. And I really appreciate the privilege of being able to work with this team. It's really been very rewarding for me personally also. Vital Insight provides population health analytics and consulting for over 150 employers across the country, all the way from Anchorage, Alaska, Miami, east to west coast. We are located here in Indianapolis and I have the good fortune to be a lead on the team that works with Carmel Clay Schools. What we do is actually provide data using Johns Hopkins Analytics to be able to evaluate the healthcare needs of the population, to identify medical spend waste, and help create strategies to improve both of those. What is unusual about this program, though, is this is the most collaborative program that we deal with across the country. We deliver reports all together, we share ideas, everybody raises their hand to say, what can they do to help? And I think that has created something absolutely amazing here, but I also want to say it's really the leadership of Dr. Prosser. I've never met anyone so dedicated to really dealing with the whole person and that just invigorates your entire team. So I want to show you, though, and for us, it is also really hard because we deal with all these companies and we know how much money they spend. We know, we have some school systems that can't afford books, but we, you know, can't quite get them to make the changes that are required. So what's important here is this gives us hope too, because when you see what can happen. So the first slide is just showing you your trend in healthcare. The solid line is what Carmel Clay Schools has spent on a per-member, per-month basis, and the dotted line would be a very conservative increase of 7.5%. So you can see that you've, you're actually changing lives, but actually spending less than most companies around the country. Then going further into the data, there's a lot of different ways we look at information. And you'll see in this slide, what we're looking at is comparing your outcomes to our benchmark database, which is our national, to our Midwest benchmark, and then also to education. And what you'll see here, although a Dr. Prosser, it's hard for me to see also, but you will see here a few things that I want to highlight. One is that it is really critical, thank you, for us to always be able to make sure we're identifying risk. We don't want to save money, but have people not use healthcare, have their diseases advance, and then we're not able to help. You'll spend more, greater disease burden. You have one of the lower rates of no information, which means people are getting care. Further, we're gonna look at percentage of physical compliance. If you look at your numbers compared to any of those other industry benchmarks, your physical compliance is actually higher. Next, we're gonna go to A1C control. That is the diabetic blood sugar control. I've been on the American Diabetes Association Board for probably seven years now, and it is a huge passion of mine. And most employers are not controlling A1Cs at all, most individuals are not controlling their A1Cs, I'm not gonna blame it on the employers. It's a really hard thing to do in our society with, for many factors. But you'll see, your control of A1C is better than anything else that we have seen. The next is, this is embarrassing enough to say that I'm old enough that I can't see there and I'm old enough I can't see here, so now I'm really challenged. The next is looking at moderate risk and high-risk control. If you don't mind, I have my glasses, that would be great. Moderate risk and high-risk control. What that is showing you is of your population, I'm glad there's a small audience here, of your population, how well are we doing improving the risk of your population? So of those people who have chronic conditions, are we helping their chronic conditions improve? And of those that are higher risk, are we improving their risk? And what you'll see is your outcomes here are stronger again than anything that we see across the board. And then lastly, the one thing that we realize that we're not doing as well with is blood pressure control. And I'll speak to that a little bit more going forward, but that is an outlier. So as we're identifying where we're doing really well, we also want to identify, what's the next step and where do we need to go? So with that, the next slide is showing me, not the same thing that's on the screen in front of me, so hold with me. Okay, so this is looking at engagement in that wellness center. And what is most critical is when you put this many resources together, your goal is really to engage the higher-risk people. We have some companies that are engaging the healthy, very involved individuals that will always go out there and do everything, but you'll notice that in this population, you are actually engaging a much higher percentage of the higher-risk population, highly unusual and exactly what you want to invest in. Then when we look at the cost efficiency, we look at those that are engaged in the program versus those that are not engaged in the program. And you'll see that your high to very high-risk individuals are more cost efficient if they're engaged in the program. Your low-risk individuals are more cost efficient. The only place where we are not as efficient is your moderate risk. Those are the people with chronic conditions. And I just want to tell you, I'm gonna do a spoiler alert, it's worth spending a little bit more money if you're gonna improve their risk at a higher rate. And that's exactly what we see in this program. So when we look at outcomes, what we see is participation in the program. Sorry, for some reason, I am not seeing the same thing you guys are seeing, so. We're looking at how much participation are we getting in the program? And what you'll see here is that we have a higher percentage of employees and spouses utilizing the program, that of those individuals, the average risk for the individuals that are utilizing the program is 1.51, where those not utilizing the program is only 1. So you really are getting a higher percentage of the population utilizing it. If you look at the other things here, you'll see that mammogram compliance, physical compliance, everything is significantly higher. But what is really kind of most startling about this data is that if you look at the risk of the future, so we have risk that is current risk and risk of where we are gonna be in 12 months, you'll see the people that are utilizing the center, their prospective risk is actually only increasing very slightly, at 2%, where non-utilizers' risk is increasing at 29%. A little bit of the fountain of youth that we're actually making people healthier and slowing down the progression over time of disease. So next, I want to take a look at how this program compares when we look at all attributed providers. So what we do in the healthcare world is we look at the data and we say, of all the individuals on your health plan, we attribute them to their primary care providers. Because what we're looking for is who's created a relationship that has really made a difference in health and cost. And you will see at the top of that list is Carmel Wellness Program. Their cost-per-unit risk is less expensive, and that's for total healthcare spend. And that's really important, considering the program is sponsored by a hospital system. People are many times very afraid that they're going to try to steer people to the hospital to make more money, but you see their total cost-per-unit risk is actually lower than the other providers in the, in this group that your people see. And we're seeing, again, higher physical compliance and it's not for avoidance of care. So now I want to talk a little bit about diabetes. We said that was one of those chronic conditions that was so critical. And Dr. Prosser spoke a little bit about pre-diabetes. And again, it's a continuum and we have an epidemic of diabetes in this country. What you'll see in your population that is highly unusual is that people go from, you know, a healthy blood sugar control to pre-diabetes and then on to diabetes. If you're effective at helping people change their lifestyle choices, you can revert them from pre-diabetes back to not having pre-diabetes. In your population, 49% of the prediabetics were no longer prediabetic, had a healthy blood sugar in the next year. That compares to 25% in our book of business, so twice as impactful. Next, we look at A1C control for diabetics. If anybody is watching any TV, you see how many commercials for diabetes drugs. Those drugs are now costing between $800 and $2,000 a month for diabetics. And what you see also, unfortunately, in our population, is we're spending all of this money, yet the improvement for people that are not controlled, our benchmark is at 43%. Carmel Clay Schools hit a benchmark of 65% improvement, and it is not from drug spend. We can see that these people are actually on less expensive drugs and it's from their lifestyle changes. That is really remarkable. Why this is so important is that if you can control your A1C level, that has an impact on so many other factors in your life. A1C control for Carmel Clay Schools is at 85% and for the rest of our population, it's at 62%. That is a significant change. And then lastly, the impact of this, because you're actually preventing people from becoming diabetic, is that you need to understand the cost impact. If they are not diabetic, it's about a $10,000 change per year, per individual. Now, when I'm talking about diabetes here, I just want to make sure everybody understands, I'm mostly talking about type 2 diabetes, which is the most prevalent form. There's also type 1, which is not going to be as controlled with lifestyle changes, but can be. Okay. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about mental health. Dr. Prosser brought this up and obviously, everybody is living it in their own way to know how, how critical mental health has been. What you'll see here in our data is we're able to look at your information and say, how many people were diagnosed with mental health conditions the year before and then in 2021, what happened with that? You'll see a significant increase in diagnosis of mental health. You'll see the impact, that graph is showing you, the utilization of mental health services in general across your plan. So that has really increased. And I believe, Roger, when you guys started out, it was a 20-hour-a-week mental health counselor, and now you guys are at two providers?
Yes, we started with 20 hours and then we increased that to 60 hours and now we moved up to 80 hours. We started at 20 and we're at 80.
Yeah, so those, and those resources are very hard to come by. So your group is actually very fortunate to be able to have providers available. Why this is important is, and this also goes into some other programs. So one of the things around mental health is the stress and anxiety around financial, which of course, you're doing with your financial program. And we also know that mental health, stress, anxiety, financial stress also lead to hypertension, high blood pressure, which is the one thing we're still really struggling with, with this group, that we want to see improved outcomes. So this all wraps together. Overall, though, quite a significant impact on everything and very impressive numbers.
Thank you, Mary. So in summary, I wanted to share some of our results. Note here that, as I'd said earlier, we, when we started this program, shortly after that, we went for six years with no change in our plan design, at the same time, no increase in premium for six years. We spend about $20 million a year on healthcare. And we believe based on trend, and this is, you know, you know, we're trying to compare to a trend. We don't know what our experience might have been if we had not started this program. But based on that average trend, we think we're saving several million dollars a year. And that's after we've, you know, paid for the expense of the wellness center. So that's, that's a net savings. We are able to compare what we're spending as compared to others, and that's part of what Mary does, is she can see that as well with her business all over the United States. But the really cool part, I think, about this is that, you know, we're actually, you know, saving lives and improving people's wellbeing. And the money's the money and in my position, you know, that's often in the forefront, but what we found here is that if you, if you move the needle on people's health and wellbeing, money takes care of itself because we know that healthier people also cost less. So that is a factor, but, but, you know, as educators in particular, I would say that, you know, we got into the business to, you know, to help people. And generally, you're thinking about students, but in this case, it's our employees and their dependents. And so one of the things that really wasn't a consideration when we started this, but I've found that over the years, that this is the, you know, the best employee relations initiative that I've ever been involved with. And as you know, when you're in the people business, it's pretty important what your employees, how your employees feel about the employer that they're working for and so forth. And so this is, as I said, has been one of the most positive initiatives I've, I've ever been involved with. So with that, we'll respond to questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. McMichael. I'm gonna open up to questions to the board, but before I do, I just really quickly wanted to talk about two of our guiding principles. One of them is that high-quality employees are vital to the success of an organization. And I think that this definitely encompasses how important, because as much as we would love to check our physical and mental health at the door when we walk into work every day, it's part of us. And the second thing is our guiding principle, that students are the center of every decision. Our employees interact one way or another with 16,000 of the most precious human beings on the planet every day, and we want to make sure that they're able to do everything that we need them to. And so I'm so thankful that we have something like this where our employees can be the best that they can be. And I'm so thankful for each and every one of you that came tonight to be able to share with us some of the great things that are happening in our district. So thank you for taking the time out of your day and your family to be with us. So with that, I would like to open up to questions from the board. Anyone like to start?
I don't know that I have questions per se. Couple comments. One is, I piggyback off what you said, Katie, like I think this is an amazing program and offering to our... offering to our teachers and educators. I'm also really just impressed at the consistency in focusing on the social-emotional learning of our students and with our educators as well, so that they can see social-emotional health lived out before them and know that it's just prioritized across the board, so I'm really happy about that. The other point that I wanted to just make is I'm just interested in seeing how we can expand some of these offerings to our students. Putting that little nugget in your mind.
To our students?
To our students.
Well, as you know, one of the most recent initiatives we have is we're providing mental health therapists for students also through Ascension, and that's a very successful program already, and we know that we're helping a lot of students in that respect.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. I'm also just thinking about some of the fitness, wellness offerings, just some of those.
In a small way, we act, you know, we do have classes that come over, health classes, I think, that every year they come over and they'll have a session at the fitness center. And what they usually find out is while they're teenagers, our instructors can, you know, easily keep up with them, pretty much wear them out in an hour fitness class.
Yeah, tell me more.
Monica, you want to go up to the podium? That way we can get you on the recording.
Just so you know, that any educator that makes a request over to me for any kind of student initiative, and all of our instructors have been background-checked, and they are all, you know, regular employees is considered, you know, by the system, we provide. So for instance, Clay Center just last Wednesday had a yoga, I sent one of my yoga instructors over there, and they did yoga with all the kids all day, you know, grade level, you know, each one had a segment. And I'm going over there and I'm going to do KidFit in March. And we also, the high school, we've done for the last four years for their health classes and their PE classes, they get to come over and experience classes to understand, because I think a lot of kids don't really understand that, you know, you don't have to be on the soccer team, or you don't have to be an elite swimmer, to be fit and to be healthy. So we provide them with yoga, Pilates, and cycling, and sometimes Zumba. Sometimes we throw a Zumba in there for fun. To show them, there are other options out there available to them. So the health teachers and the PE teachers work with me, and I coordinate all the instructors. So we do some of that. And any, but like I said, any school that contacts me and says, oh, we'd love to have an instructor for blah, 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 we definitely provide that for them.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Will? No? Okay. Thank you so much, everybody, for taking, again, taking the time out of your very busy schedules to come talk to us. Thank you, Mr. McMichael, for the tour earlier. It was so great for us to be able to walk through the wellness center and see the exercise classes and all the wonderful opportunities our employees have. And as a board, we will continue to champion this and ring it from the rooftops, that it is such a great thing that we have, and we're so very proud of all the work that's been done for it. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to our reports. Dr. Michael Bresberg.
Thank you. I'll add my kudos to the team here, and Mr. McMichael, and your leadership, and really appreciate you guys coming and telling your stories tonight. Just amazing, and it's good to have you here and have you alive and in better shape, and we wish you the best as you continue that journey. Actually, I was, had my physical today with Dr. Prosser, and she told me I needed to cut back on the Diet Mountain Dew, and I have one open right here, and I took one drink, and it just doesn't taste good anymore. So there's some good things going on there, and I really appreciate it. One thing, I don't know if we mentioned it, but I know Dr. O's thinking it just like me, is that, you know, I didn't always work for Carmel Clay Schools, and it was very difficult to win a good teaching candidate or any of our candidates, really, when you're competing with Carmel's benefit cycles, I mean, the benefit program. So not only is it a benefit to our employees, but it's also a benefit as we go into the competitive nature of trying to get the best people here to serve our kids and families. And so it really makes a difference, and it just makes us stronger. So I just really appreciate all the information tonight and all that you do to make our team work. You kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but I did want to say something about our school resource officers, since it's School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. And we're fortunate to have just an amazing team of SROs, and Lieutenant Miller back there is the guy in charge of that, and does a wonderful job. And our SROs are so much more than like security, people tend to think of it as a security officer, and they absolutely will protect our kids and our staff and all of our SCCS family. But there's so much more than that, and they invest in our kids, and our kids get relationships with officers that are just different than our normal school population, and they are just miraculous in some of the things that they've done to benefit our kids. And that whole idea of a school officer being a kind of an unofficial counselor, or being that extra person that just notices something that a kid might need, and they're just a vital part of the team. So I just want you guys to know, and please tell the whole unit how much we do appreciate you and all that you do for our kids and our families. And also, I keep saying this over and over again, but next year, we will meet our goal of having a school, at least one school resource officer in every school in our district. And that was a part of our safety referendum promise, and that promise comes true in the fall, so we're excited about that. So these guys do an awful lot for us. You know, we, school resource officers go to away games and competitions, you know, to watch over our kids and our crowds, and they just do so many things, so we really appreciate our SROs. Thank you very much. While we're on the appreciation tour here, you know, we had kind of a weird deal where we had three snow days in a row. We don't have snow days technically anymore, we have e-learning days. But we had three days in a row, and they were the oddest three days, because each day was a different issue. The first day it was freezing, you know, freezing rain turned to ice on the road, and it was at a time where we would be dismissing kids from school, and we could have gone to school that day maybe, but we also may have had the largest sleepover in the history of time if we couldn't get those kids home. So that was that first day. And also, it was probably an advantage not to have 2,000 Carmel High School kids on the road when the ice was there. That was probably a bad, a bad thing, too. So we felt like that was a good decision. The second day was the crazy, you know, snowpocalypse, you know, it all came down that day, it was a very big sloppy day, so that one made kind of sense. The third day was really kind of unusual, you know, in that we were trying to decide when the roads would be ready to go. And we knew that the town was going to do an all-city plow at midnight, and then we had to get our own lots cleared, and the wind was blowing, and the snow was light, and there was a lot of drifting going on. And at the end of the decision-making on that, we just had, we didn't feel like the window was in a good spot for us if we did a two-hour delay. Even if we did a two-hour delay, it might not, it might not play out for us where we could get everybody in and out safely. So we had three, you know, three days like that. But all that to say is that our maintenance workers and our snow team were amazing. They moved a lot of snow in a short amount of time, and if you were out there on Monday, our sidewalks are, you know, it was another thing where we were wondering, can we get all this snow moved and get it out of the way? And they just did an amazing job. There was tons of snow to move around, and we're just grateful because they worked after hours, they worked on the weekends. You know, this is a team that's consistently, you know, watching those, the weather and the road conditions and trying to piece all the different things together. So really appreciate our maintenance workers and custodians that did so much work to make that happen. I also do a shout-out to the folks in the community, because a lot of people dug out their bus stops, a lot of people cleared off the sidewalks, and made it safe for our kids to get to school, and really appreciate that, too, as our community. We sent out a message yesterday announcing that we would be moving to mask optional starting February 22nd, and this move would provide one more week for cases to continue to go down. We've seen a sharp downward trend, which we're excited about. We haven't seen that since, you know, kind of that July, you know, May, June, July time of last summer. So we did make that decision, wanted to put that out there. We're expecting to see our quarantine totals, you know, they may tick up, they may tick down a little bit, but right now, we're in a pretty good spot. And with this huge decrease in positive cases, we're hopeful those numbers will stay low, and we'll be moving more into more relaxed guidance soon. We're hoping to hear from the Indiana State Health Department that this may be coming to an end and get some relief on the contact tracing as well. So please continue to check our COVID webpage for specific quarantine guidance for vaccinated and vaccinated students. The rules are a little different, but we have a webinar coming up on Thursday morning, and we'll see if the protocols change. They have been changing pretty regularly here lately, and that's kind of where we are at this point in time. So now we're kind of heading into the bell ringer, and I had a hard time deciding what to pick, so I just picked two. And the first one was under the category of they did it again. Our women's, girls' swim team won their 36th state championship, 36th state championship in a row. And that's a national record, and you could actually add second and third together, and they still would have, they still would have won. It was an amazing, amazing, just amazing performance. So they're crowned state champions, and we had Junior Barrett Bergland, who set a new state record in the 100-yard backstroke. And then we had freshman Lindsay Bowen, who tied the state record on Friday night, and then in the finals, she ran the state record again. So two days in a row, two swims in a row, she swam the state record, and so real proud of Lindsay as well. Really, it was the whole team. And I'll tell you my fun fact for the, for year 36, for the 36th win. I kind of a nerd about looking at the prelims, and if you looked at the prelims, there's a possibility, the highest number of swimmers you can take to the state championship is 24. And Carmel High School qualified 24 swimmers for the state finals. Now, in the state finals, there's two heats. There's the first heat, which is the slower times and less points, and then there's the fast heat, which is, of course, the fastest times in the state from the prelims. Of the 24 swimmers that Carmel had in the finals, 21 of them swam in the fast heat. And so it was really a very dominant thing, and those girls work extremely hard, and their coaches do, too, and they put in hours and hours and yards and yards of time in that pool moving water, and it's just really good to see kids that work so hard get the payoff that they deserve. So real proud of them. And I was there, and they did, I was encouraged to jump in the pool with, and I did it, and I did not drown, and I felt like I was in pretty good shape, because there's probably 50 kids that could have pulled me out of there if I needed to, but it was a lot of fun, too. They, they're just a great group of kids and real sweet kids. And congratulations to the Carmel High School Women's Swim Team for their 36th state championship in a row. And then finally, national merit finalists were announced this week, and we have 54 merit scholarships in Carmel High School. These totals continue to just blow me away, and just to give you an example, there's many, many states across our country that if you add all those merit scholarships together, they won't reach the number 54. And so once again, our kids are just hard-working kids, they're doing extremely well, they have a hard-working staff that surrounds them and gets them to the highest level they can. So congratulations to those 54 finalists and their families for an amazing accomplishment. You know, it takes all of us together for good things to happen like that, and I really, really am impressed by that, and congratulations. Probably the only thing I'd add to the end, kind of as a PS, is that I'll be heading down to the State House tomorrow, because there's some very, very important legislation going on that really will have a deep impact on education in the state of Indiana. And I know you've heard me say this before, but I'm extremely concerned about the teacher shortage. It's a national teacher shortage, but in Indiana, it's just as bad as anywhere. And with the lower numbers of kids going into the teaching profession, and then with some of the legislation, I think that will have a negative impact, you know, on that, I'm really hopeful that our policymakers will make good decisions and do things that will motivate folks and that will honor the honorable profession of education. Our teachers are the most hard-working individuals I know, and our staff, and our bus drivers, and our food service, and our maintenance people, and it's just a big, hard-working family. And I really hope that we can, again, get to that level where we really lift up our educators for all that they do for the kids and families we serve. And so, you know, stay tuned, because tomorrow's a big day, and some of the decisions that will be made could have a positive impact or it could have a negative impact for years to come. So we'll keep tabs and keep working towards that. So with that, I will close my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bresberg. And for the swimming championship, the 36th is the most consecutive in any sport. So not only swimming, any sport in any high school in the United States, so I think that's amazing. On that note, I will take a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify? Aye, meaning adjourn. Thank you.